Good morning, everybody. We'd like to call this meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. We're thrilled to be in the borough of Troop today, and I just want to recognize some of the -- actually, all of the elected officials, some of which who are here this morning. We have the mayor of Troop, Joe Tropiak, here. Give him a round of applause. We have our council president, Rich Koharski. And if I'm not mistaken, I think those are the only two elected officials from Troop, correct? Am I missing anybody?
Tax collector.
Oh, the tax collector.
Absolutely.
Oh, Jesus. Well, I know him. Most important. I want to also recognize our council vice president from Troop, Bob Magliocchi, council member Vince Tenanya, council member Chris Mazuka, council member Charlene Tomasovich, council member Matt Shorba, the borough manager and solicitor Lou Samini, the chief clerk Robin Gally, and I also see our good friend, the fire chief Andy Hedgitt is here. So, thank you again, everybody. We appreciate it. Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. On agenda items? Sure, come on.
My name's Len, Len Dobson, and I came here based on some of the former reports and things, and watching your films and things, and I see a lot of the bickering that's going on with you guys.
Sir, oh, this is just for agenda items only. There is going to be a portion of the meeting where it's just general public comment, but this is just if you want to speak on any of the agenda items.
Okay, well, this has to do with your payments and registries and such. And one of the things, I was just giving basically an introduction, is just the fact that a lot of what you guys are doing, you're missing the point on some of these. Like, I was looking through here, and again, I might have lost because I don't know, you know, there's not a lot of information on this stuff, but it does, like, you'll have something like Dempsey uniforms, you have Star uniforms, and you have one or two of the same and such. And my question with a lot of these is, who's auditing these things? How do we know how legitimate they are? When they come to you guys, you guys get this thing, you get this report here, and you sign off on it, and you don't even know for sure what you're signing off on.
So, I can answer that question. So, it gets, those things get, like, for example, Star uniform or Dempsey, I don't know specifically, I'm assuming they might be for uniforms for our sheriff's office or something like that, but those get vetted a few different ways, through our treasurer's office, through revenue and finance, and through our controller's office. So, our controller, Gary DeBily, was here. So, there are checks and balances. It's not like it just comes on our desk and we sign off on it. It's been vetted. They're not just sending out checks without backup and without an explanation.
Right, and I appreciate that, but again, I'm wondering what, you know, there's, looks like there's a whole lot of per diems, for example, 150 for your justices, 100 for individuals and things like that. And I'm, you know, I mean, the whole idea with where we're at right now with the financial situation we're in, why are we not combining some of these things and asking people to lower their costs? I mean, why can't we have them submit, like, if they have a meal that day or something, if it is a per diem, submit the receipt and pay them basically on a receipt instead of just handing them a per diem for $100 or $150? It doesn't make sense to just throw that money out the door. And there's a lot, there are a lot more. One of the things that I would like to do is, prior to this, on this particular matter, we had gotten together before COVID, a whole bunch of us, and we tried to examine some of these things, and frankly, we were stonewalled on this stuff. They wouldn't let us get down into the nitty gritties on it. I would like to volunteer my services. I've been in, I've overseen accounting, I've been in credit, I helped take a company from 1.5 million to 98.7 million in 20 years' time, okay? I know a little bit about finance, but it's corporate finance. I understand the only thing that you guys can do is one of two things. You can either raise the taxes or you can cut the costs, but I would love an opportunity to put together a group so that we could go through this line by line and find out where our shortcomings are, because obviously, there's a lot of spending going on here. I mean, some of it is like $318,000 for one bill and things like that. Are there places where we can cut them down? Are there places where we can put it out on bids and find a better price? I saw one company on here, my wife used to work for Marywood University, and it was the same company, they decided they were going to put it out on bid, and they cut their costs by 60%. So, you know, and again, I don't know what we can do, but I'm certainly, I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican, it doesn't matter to me, I want to see, you know, this place prosper, I want to see our county prosper, and that's what we got to work at. And please, guys, stop the name game, okay? I just wanted to say that. I know I've seen things about, Chris, there were, if you want to get into the Republican and Democrat thing, there were three administrations that there were two Democrats on it. We don't want to do that. Those people were stupid with what they did, they didn't do it properly, obviously. You guys are stuck with it. Let's do something and make it work. And I'm sure we can coordinate with Chris since I did with him before, I'm willing to sit down with a whole bunch of people that are of our caliber and a bunch of bean counters and see what we can do for you guys and go through these things. You guys spent a fortune on your--
Turn.
Your turn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items? Okay. Resolution 24-0224.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby approve the following payables. Lockwana County's general fund numbers, 375-973-376-115, inclusive totaling $1,903,108. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,255,289. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, hold on one sec, one second.
Probably, yeah, we'll do the proclamation at the end.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the payables.
Motion.
Second. On the question.
On the question. Good morning. Just to answer the gentleman's question, as far as the invoices that are on today's payable list, each of the invoices are paid according to county guidelines, and each of these invoices have been audited and approved by the Controller's Office, had been audited and approved by every county department head prior to coming to the Controller's Office. So, everything here is in order and able to be paid today.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0213.
Ratifying agreement with the First Light Fiber. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby ratify the agreement with First Light Fiber Incorporated to improve fiber connections. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our chief information officer, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, commissioners. Our current vendor, Kimber, was bought out by First Light, that provides us with internet service. So, we need to amend our existing agreement to reflect the new vendor that we all have to be bills for. First Light provides us with a secure fiber connection to the internet, and it helps us prevent cyber attacks.
Questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, all those in favor, I'm sorry, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0214.
Accepting a quote from Scale Fusion. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby accept the quote from Scale Fusion Incorporated for the county's device management. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Mr. Brown.
Again, commissioners, as all the items that we're posting on here today all are budgeted, so these were already put into the budget prior, so this way they can be approved. We are attaining a mobile device management system to help us secure not only the data on our laptops, cell phones, and tablets, but to help us provide with loss prevention support as well. So, we like to use this tool to actually help us recover lost assets whenever they should happen.
And Mike, give us the scenario if we weren't to do this, what, like, what's the negative if we don't move forward with this?
Well, as we all had our cell phones and we've actually misplaced them, a lot of our county departments use our county cell phones. If for some reason they were actually lost and not encrypted, any data that's actually found on those could be actually retrieved and used in any malicious way. So, this is one way that we can actually help prevent any loss of data to the county.
And the data you're talking about, like, give us the example you gave us the other day about the Office of Youth and Family Services, for example, like, the work that they do.
So, within the Office of Youth and Family Services, as they do surveys and house visits, they take photos on their cell, on their county-issued cell phones. So, any of these photos of minors and the outcome of one's residence, all that information's stored on these cell phones, and they're supposed to upload that data into their case management system. So, if, in the course of their day, and they actually misplace it, we actually can put children at risk, and I would rather not have that happen.
Any questions, or that's for Mr. Brown? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0215.
Accepting a quote from CDW. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby accept the quote from CDW government for a three-year data protection package with Veronis. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Mr. Brown.
As with Scale Fusion, Veronis is going to help us with auditing and securing network resources within the county. So, this is for helping us with anyone that got ransomwared or preventing those actually actions from actually happening. So, we're looking for more tools to actually help prevent us with the growing threats that are going out there, and it's a rough world out there in the cyberverse.
Can you give us an example of local government in our area who's been attacked in terms of, like, a cyber attack?
Yes, we remember the issues that happened in Luzerne County recently, out in, I believe in, near Erie, they recently also had a ransomware attack. At the time, they were not having any tools available to actually prevent certain things happen, and they had to pay over $300,000 to get some of their data back.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0216.
Entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Troop Borough for the use of the county's computer-aided dispatch system. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here's Mr. Brown.
This agreement is to state that Lockwana County's 911 center can actually provide the CAD data to the third-party group that the Troop Police Department is using to utilize that data for their purposes. We are doing this, as we've done with Scranton, to actually make sure that we have an actual document and stating that we're doing this securely and not allowing any other data transfers to happen without their request.
Any questions for Mr. Brown on this one? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0217.
Accepting proposals from the county-issued devices. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby accept the proposals from the Mobility Marketplace and Verizon Wireless Device Trade-In Program for county-issued phones. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here's Mr. Brown.
So, this program allows us to, as we upgrade devices, as they reach end of life, we can actually send these phones back to Verizon, T-Mobile, and they will actually issue us a refund going towards our current bills, so this way we can actually cut down some of our costs as well as giving these devices back, so they're not just going into the trash.
And Mike, this is at no cost to the county, correct?
No cost to the county.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, just on this and the past couple of items that Mike Brown has talked about, I do think that it's crucial that we continue to invest in technology in order to enhance the efficiency, the transparency, and accessibility of our government services. By modernizing our systems, we can better serve all of our residents in Lockwana County, we can streamline operations, and we can ensure that Lockwana County government remains in the 21st century, so, thanks, Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. Resolution 24-0218.
Ratifying the CDBG modifications and revisions. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby ratify submissions of modifications and revisions of the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. This is for federal fiscal year 2019 in Clark Summit Borough. The modification will create the public facilities other for the Clark Summit Senior Center Parking Lot Paving Program with the following funding: $83,232 transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line Item. In Taylor Borough, the modification will create the public community facilities for the Taylor and Borough ADA Curb Ramp Project with $20,600 being transferred from the Taylor Borough South Pond Phase 2 Street Improvement Project. For federal fiscal year 2020 in the Clark Summit Borough, the modification will create the public facilities other for the Clark Summit Senior Center Parking Lot Paving Project with the following funding: $85,221 being transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line Item. In Jessup Borough, the modification will create the public community facilities other for the Jessup Borough Bank Building ADA Elevator Construction with $81,418 being transferred from the Single Unit Residential Housing Rehabilitation Line Item. And in Taylor Borough, the modification will create the public community facilities for the Taylor Borough ADA Curb Ramp Project with $60,161.74 being transferred from the Taylor Borough South Pond Phase 1 Street Improvement. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristen Magnotta.
Thanks, Chief. Good morning, commissioners. As Chief had mentioned, this is a formality to ratify the modifications for three CDBG programs broken up into five different pots of funding for 2019 and the year 2020, and this, this is time-sensitive. We would like to have this ratification passed before November, so these can move on to be approved by DCED and then be completed at the beginning of 2025 as they need to be in order for the municipalities in the county to complete the use of their funds. This is, again, at no cost to the county, these are funds that flow from HUD to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development and then to the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 24-0220.
Approving a professional service agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby approve the professional service agreement for the Office of Youth and Family Services with National Mentor Healthcare LLC, Pennsylvania Mentor, for the fiscal year '24 through '25. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our interim Director of Health and Human Services, Ms. Barbara Durkin.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to request your approval of a professional service agreement for the county and the Office of Youth and Family Services to enter in with National Mentor. It is a foster care program. Obviously, we know we have a crisis here in Lockwana County with our children and youth office, and we're looking for additional foster parents as well as additional foster care placement facilities, so we're just looking to enter into this contract with this particular one. The reimbursement rate is 80% from the state and then 20% for the county. That's typical across the state. There's, the cost per day varies depending on the level of service. It ranges anywhere from $100 a day to $200 a day, but for the most case, will be somewhere in the middle. We do have a need for this provider, so we are looking for your support of our contract. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0221.
Approving the Homeless Assistance Program Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby approve agreements with the Department of Human Services and its providers for the Homeless Assistance Program Agreement for the fiscal year '24 through '25 for the following: Catholic Social Services and the United Neighborhood Centers. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Ms. Durkin.
Thank you, commissioners. Every year, our Department of Human Services receives human service block grant funds that funds a great deal of programs here in Lockwana County. One of the programs is the Homeless Assistance Program. We contract with United Neighborhood Centers and Catholic Social Services for both case management services and housing-related services for individuals within the county. There's no cost to the county. This particular pot of money is about $120,000, and again, it's all state money that comes into the county. We do put an RFP out to secure the providers that we work with. These were the two that were selected based on that process, so we're just looking for your support of this contract.
Any questions for Mrs. Durkin? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0222.
Approving the Agreements for Human Services Development Fund. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County is hereby approve the provider agreements with, for the Department of Human Services, for the Human Services Development Fund fiscal year '24 through '25 for the following: Jewish Family Services and Meals on Wheels. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Ms. Durkin.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, similar to the last one for the Homeless Assistance Program, the Human Service Development Fund is a pot of money that comes out of our human service block grant. It's completely state-funded. It's about, this pot of money is about $60,000. We fund Meals on Wheels, so obviously, meals for individuals who are in need, and then counseling services through Jewish Family Services. We put out an RFP every year, these were the two providers that were selected. Again, there's no county match or anything, it's 100% funded by the state.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, both of these programs are unbelievable assets to Lockwana County, and I think everybody would agree that, especially Meals on Wheels, sometimes that's the only opportunity that these people get to see somebody and interact with them, and I know in speaking to people who use this program, it really is a life changer for them, so I'm glad that we're continuing to move forward with it.
Absolutely, and there, just so you all know, there's the likelihood that we'll be receiving additional human service block grant money this year, so these amounts might change, but we won't find out our allocation until about October from the state, but we're hearing that we should receive additional money to fund some of these services.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0223.
Approving the continuum of the Care Planning Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockwana County is hereby approve the Human Services Continuum of Care Planning Grant with the United Neighborhood Centers of NEPA. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners Lockwana County held on September 4, 2024. I'm filing once again, here's Ms.
Thank you, commissioners. This is pretty standard, we do this every year. We partner with United Neighborhood Centers to do a comprehensive housing assessment, planning process. The $6,000 that is allocated for this particular program comes right from our human service block grant money, so it doesn't cost the county any money. We are required to do this point-in-time assessment, and we've been partnering with United Neighborhood Centers for a series of years on this, so this is pretty standard.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, now I'd just like to read into the record a proclamation declaring the month of September 2024 to be Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month in Lockwana County. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year are diagnosed with cancer in the United States, the average age of diagnosis is six years old, and whereas, on average, there's been a 0.6% increase in incidence per year over the last 50 years, resulting in an overall incidence increase of 24% since the 1970s. Two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions because of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas, in the last 30 years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancer, and the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. And whereas, hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Cancer Society and the Coaches vs. Cancer Initiative in Lockwana County, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educations, emotional and financial support. Now therefore, we, Bill Gohin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Churimak, commissioners of the county of Lockwana, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Pediatric Cancer Awareness and Prevention Month in Lockwana County. Thank you. Okay, now is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board? Sure.
Hey, I wanted to start out by apologizing if I sounded like I was attacking, you know, the procedure, whatever. I definitely was not, that was not my intent at all. My intent was that there are areas within government, within a corporation, wherever, where you can cut costs, where you can find places where you can, you know, consolidate things. Sometimes it's a tough pill to swallow, sometimes it's your friend that's been working there for 10 or 15 years, but you can take his job and his job and put it together, and at that point, you save some money for the county. Sometimes it's a matter of bidding and whatever, and we know that sometimes in the process there are, you're gonna find where you're paying more than what you need to pay for things, and I certainly would like to volunteer, and as I said, if you guys want, we can put a committee together to go through and really look through this stuff. I know you guys had hired a company to come in and do that, I understand that, but I've been through that same scenario three times with three different companies, and what I've found is these people that are doing this, God bless them, they're learning, usually they're learning how to be a bean And what I've found is these people that are doing this, God bless them, they're learning. Usually, they're learning how to be a bean counter or whatever, if you will. And they're in there auditing and they're working under a person who is, you know, their overseer or whatever. And their final analogy on this whole thing was raise the taxes. Well, that's that should always you can't put the cart before the horse. All I'm asking is let's look and see if we could cut some costs first and then raise the taxes. Because and I don't even agree with the way the taxes are being done. Let me give you an example. We built a stick-built home and we had to build it little by little because we're not rich people. We put in a stamped concrete backyard and I think I-
Excuse me one second. Could somebody tell the people in the hallway out there? Or could you close that door? This gentleman's trying to speak and I have a hard time hearing him.
Thank you, sir. But, you know, we finally put an awning over it. So when they when the lady came to do the assessment on our property, she said, "That's a living quarter." I believe I sent you guys a letter on that same situation. And it's not a living quarter. And my joke about it was if you guys want to come move in there in January and I'll give you rent free, you can live there and see if you can survive there. It's not a living area. So you see what I'm saying? It's you can't you can't just take people like myself and my wife. We're retired now. We're living off of our 401K, which by the way, lost over a hundred thousand dollars this past two or three years, thanks to the people in Washington. But anyway, all I'm saying is let's try to cut some costs. I'll volunteer. I'll take my time. You don't have to pay me to do it, okay? I'll come in. I won't give you all my time because I'm doing what I like doing. I'm playing music on the side and enjoying that. And I finally get to do what I want to do for a change. But certainly, I'll do everything I can. It's a little different with government than it is with a corporation because we had revenue coming in. You guys don't have revenue coming in. So there's a lot of places where you can't make those adjustments or whatever. But the fact is, if we can cut costs down and find out where and you guys are going to be the bad guys. I'm telling you, if we have to lay some people off or something like that, if it comes down to making those cuts, they're going to look at you. But people have to understand there's got to be areas where we can get rid of it. One final thing I will say, I don't know if it was actually the our county that did this, but with the musicians, for example, in the area, a lot of the musicians, what they did is they were able to put money in from what was left over from COVID, okay? And they all took a big chunk of money. Well, a bunch of us refused to do that because to me, that would be like stealing. I couldn't in my right mind, I couldn't take that money. And some of them were making thousands of dollars. I was really, you know, just shocked that they didn't take that money and put it toward the county. I mean, we have roads that need to be done and things like that, and we don't have the money to do it. And one final issue that I want to make is, you know, with efficiency, for example, in Blakely, they did the roads, okay? I know that was a lot of it was for the was paid for by the state. Did a beautiful job. The roads were just awesome. What happens? The gas company comes in right afterwards, rips the roads up, and now you're going down the road like this. You know what I'm saying? So if we can be a little more efficient with, you know, coordinating this kind of stuff and use our money wisely too, that's the other point I want to make. And thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Would anyone else?
We'd like to invite you to the Controller's Office anytime to sit down with us, you know, follow all the county and state guidelines as far as bidding and approving those. Thank you.
Commissioners Bob Bollas-Troop, my company's been here fifty-three years. The gentleman had one hell of an idea to help save Lackawanna County by being neutral, not being paid, and doing what's right for this community. As a business, which the county actually is a business in a sense, and your revenue sharing comes from the taxpayers, and our business comes from companies we do business with. But if you can't make it in one way, you have to cut corners in another way to survive. The fuel, everything else that's gone since Washington went nuts. But I think that's a great idea. And maybe a citizen community committee put together to help cut the costs down in a neutral position, I think would be beneficial to the county since there's no cost at all. And you're getting expertise from individuals forty, fifty, sixty years in business and working in an environment and being able to do the decisions that are necessary. So I applaud you, sir, for coming up here and saying what you did. The other part, we had La Fiesta. Mark Doerr with the county ordered the porta potties, put right up against Washington Avenue. I'm not going to mention the other idiot's name because I have no respect for the street. As far as I'm concerned, it's still spruce. But the stench from them, people eating food and all were there. And the purpose of it was because I had the trailer for Trump parked there. So it was every attitude they could take to block it, including the city of Scranton backing a garbage truck up where people are eating. And the smell of garbage, the smell of human feces coming out of the porta potties was just a joke. If they can't stand the competition, I'm for Trump a hundred percent. My companies are. And I made that very apparent. My trailers speak volumes. They'll be in Harrisburg tonight. But that's not what it's about here. What's about is all of us as Americans. We all have a right to free speech. We all have a right to be here and speak our decision. But to use government to try and stop what was going on, to block the trailers and offend the people that were there is totally wrong. La Festa was about people, not about politics. And having people come in and say, "I was ordered to do this," came from the top down. And you should look into it. The other part I want to bring up, and I know it's a sort of subject with anybody, Commissioner Chirmack, Gahan, and all. I think you ought to just put the BS to bed. If you're going to run, this is a business. Run it as a business. All three are equal, one way or the other. You're all called Commissioners. And to be attacking Chris Chirmack, and what really annoyed me, I spoke here the last time, made my statements, and I had to leave because I have other obligations. Chirmack got to speak, and then, of course, you had to rebuttal to him and hammered the hell out of him. I think today, I would like to see the Commissioners agree that Chris Chirmack gets the final say today. If you're making a statement regarding him, that he's incompetent or whatever it may be. Bill, I could go back on you. And as you know, we were in court together. You know, I took a trailer, put your head on as a skunk, what I thought you did in the city. I could look at your record. Naug Park is a mud pond. I could go on and on, raising taxes. When Geisinger should have been paying more money. I could go on and on about your record in the city of Scranton for all those years. It's not as though all of us here are squeaky clean. We all have a skeleton. Pardon?
I said, including yourself.
You're damn right, including myself. My name is all over. You can look me up anywhere on there. I sat in a county jail. You're absolutely right. I did what I had to do, but I'm one of the largest employers in the area, and no thanks to Lackawanna County. Between eighty-one ninety-two, I employed over twelve hundred people and had six hundred trucks on the road. So you could say anything about me what you want. I'm still a Scrantonian. I still live here in Lackawanna County. I dealt with dirty cops, dirty judges, and dirty lawyers, and I'll name every damn one of them anytime you want. I'm here today, and that's the bottom line. I'm a resident in this community, and I have a right to speak whatever I want. My background is my background.
Thank you.
Just like yours and everyone else.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Kane. I recently just celebrated twenty-five years with the American Cancer Society. I'm also here with Michelle Newberry. No, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to, you know, obviously, so much divides us these days, but cancer and fighting cancer is something that absolutely unites us. So I want to thank you for raising important awareness to the issue of pediatric cancer and childhood cancer, and also thank you for our support of our Coaches vs. Cancer Program. Want to just highlight some of the good stuff that is happening in our community. Our CVC program is nationally recognized. It's one of the most unique of its kind. But three of our schools are recognized in the national top ten in fundraising. I just want to make that point. So Valley View, Scranton, and Dunmore High Schools. Scranton or Valley View is actually the number one public school in the entire nation in terms of dollars raised. So as a Valley View alumni, I would not want to forget to mention that. So just want to, again, thank you all. And I also want to just make a quick recognition of we're very honored by the collaboration on the three-on-three tournament this past summer. So just want to personally thank for all those involved in that campaign and you as Commissioners for helping us with that. But thank you for raising awareness for pediatric cancer, and thank you for helping us fight cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you, Commissioners, please maybe get your guys' pictures taken. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. And we now ask if you want to, we'll present you with the proclamation. I apologize.
Throw it off on the roof.
Who needs to come on?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Chirmack?
Well, again, thank you for coming. And I know everyone, everyone has, I'm sure, has a story of someone in their family or themselves with cancer. And I lost quite a few and watched my grandfather suffer with pancreatic cancer. It was absolutely horrible. So, you know, all the support that the county gives and all the volunteers and everything that goes on is just it's great and you just keep supporting it. So I appreciate everybody coming in and supporting me as well as a Commissioner. You know, I'll continue to do everything that I can do. You know, you mentioned something about the roads and then the utilities committed in cutting them up. That I think they wait for us to pave the roads and every other. And so I know we are working. I don't know where we are at this point, but Blakely Borough has a very rigorous or vigorous pave-cut ordinance so that if they do come in do that, they just can't come in and patch it. They have to, you know, fix the road from curb to curb or whatever, you know, whatever the case may be.
My idea.
Yeah, well, good day. Thank you. So I know Chris Payone was working with the county as well to try to duplicate kind of what they have. So I know that's ongoing and it needs to be done. And as for volunteering, I appreciate that. I know you were stepped up for the years ago for the other committee that we put together. And then go sit with Gary. Gary will have a lot of information for you. And any input that you have would be greatly appreciated. So I appreciate that. And Bob, thanks for coming. Sorry about the smells at the La Festa. I was a little busy with my son's wedding this weekend, so I was not there. So I-
Well, we got to throw it away.
Well, we could throw it again next year as well.
Excuse me.
It's a great time. And the La Festa brings so many people. It's a great event. So I appreciate that. But that's all I have really. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGloin?
Thanks to the Borough of Troop for hosting us here today. I think it's one of the really fun and great parts of the job is being able to be out in the community and taking these meetings on the road. My five-year-old started kindergarten this morning. And certainly an emotional day in the McGloin household. I think he was a little nervous. He was a little nervous. He was a little excited. You know, I was from the window of the car trying to give him a little motivation. My wife was crying. So and I think I saw a few gray hairs on the side of my head this morning when I woke up. But I say, I don't care what color it turns as long as I don't lose it, Brian. And then, you know, lastly, lastly, this Saturday, September seventh, we're hosting a thirtieth cross-country invitational at McDade Park in Scranton. The deadline to register is five PM today. The first race begins at nine-thirty AM. The last race will finish by noon with the awards ceremony following at twelve forty-five PM. So hoping for great weather. Certainly encourage everyone to come out and support our local athletes. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. Just want to report that Lackawanna County had seventeen employees who participated in the United Way Day of Caring on August twenty-ninth. Employees from various departments worked on community service projects to support nonprofits throughout the county, which I know we all think is great. This year, Lackawanna County is a pace setter for the two thousand twenty-four United Way campaign. Lackawanna County employees who pledge before October thirty-first are eligible for a chance to win prizes for participating in this year's campaign. Details have been emailed to all employees for ways to pledge, or you can contact Sarah McDonald or Brian Jeffers if you have any questions about the two thousand twenty-four United Way campaign. I also want to thank the Troop Borough for hosting us this morning. And I just want to take a second to respond to this gentleman's comments before, which I really appreciate. So just to take everybody back for a minute, in January, when we took office, okay? One of the first things that we did was to recognize, and we knew this when we were running, that there was major league financial problems in Lackawanna County. The first thing that we did was to enter into an agreement through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development with the Strategic Management Planning Program. And that's offered to counties and cities and boroughs and townships throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We recognized the problem and we acted immediately. As part of that partnership, being in that program, we received a one-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development to hire financial experts to come in and to support the team that we already have in place, our CFO and others in the Revenue and Finance Office, to help mine through all of these myriads of issues that we have. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, after an RFP process, we hired PFM. Those are the financial experts. They came in and they are literally working with our team every single day to do exactly what you just said. How can we be more efficient? Where can we cut costs? They conducted a management audit, and those that report will be released to the public, okay? They're still just putting the finishing touches on it. What does a management audit do? They interviewed every single department head, and they went through their budget. They went through every process, every procedure. And they've done this with other counties throughout Pennsylvania before. So I thought that was really important. And to my knowledge, that's the first time that Lackawanna County has done something like that in a long time. On top of just going through all the budget hearings that we sat in on and going through every single line item with every department director in the county. I just want to caution people that the notion that you can cut your way out of this, I agree with you that there certainly are areas that we can cut or areas where we can be more efficient. But the notion that we can cut our way out of what next year is going to be probably in the area of a twenty-five-million-dollar structural deficit, it doesn't work like that. You could take every non-union position in Lackawanna County, if you're talking about employment, and you can wipe, you can cut them all out. It won't touch the structural deficit. So I know it's not popular for politicians and public officials to talk about raising taxes. And I've had people come up to me and say, "Billy, what are you doing? You're talking about raising taxes months before the budget even comes out." Because just like when I was on council in Scranton, I want to be honest with people. I can't lie. This what you will see in this budget that we're going to present is the truth. It's the honest-to-God's truth. You had a situation since roughly two thousand and thirteen where your expenditures shot out of control and your revenue stayed the same. Because they only raised taxes once for the general fund since two thousand and thirteen. The other time they raised taxes prior to this last administration was to go towards the pension, because that's another issue. Our pension is severely underfunded because they weren't putting those payments in. because they weren't putting those payments in. So the reason I say this is I just want to make sure that everyone, I'm being honest with people. I mean, I know it's not popular, and as I said, I've had people come up to me. I'm telling the truth. I'm giving it to you straight. And when the people that we hired, the financial experts, come in, they're going to present what they found. And we gave a progress, almost like a progress report, two or three weeks ago, when they came in and gave a cash flow analysis, which shows that we're going to be roughly between eight to eleven million dollars short at the end of this year. So I'm not playing the blame game. I'm just telling it the way that it is, and that's the only way that I know how to do it. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.